Okay, take a look at the minutes real quick. Done that all right.
Did we come out of executive session with anything no different than what it was the last time? I'm just waiting on that meeting. Okay.
We didn't take any action. I would move to approve the minutes of the December 3rd meeting.
One second.
Any further discussion? Not all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
First order of business here, I guess we have a letter of resignation from Brett Kingen. He'd like to resign for, as the Director of the Lincoln County EMS effective thirty days. The letter is dated November 28th. He does state that he would like to continue on as a part-time paramedic and work a few shifts each month, so... We'll need to start looking for a director. And if we don't promote someone from within, we'll have to... Make another hire, which I don't think we probably have the budget to do.
What is that dated, November 28th?
I would say instead, someone's staying until first, but the letter's dated the 28th. I haven't talked to him yet. And then we also have some correspondence from Flint Hills Area Agency on Aging stating that Lynn Stagman has come to the end of his second term. According to the letter, he is eligible for another term and would like to be reappointed.
That's not elected?
No. Silver haired legislators elected.
Oh. Oh, this is Board of Directors, I see.
Yeah. Two from each county.
Here's the second one. You ready? So who is now the silver haired legislator?
Last Richards.
Is he still, or...?
As far as I know, we haven't got a resignation from him under the silver haired legislator.
But his term will be coming to you.
Yes.
This year, at the end of the year?
I'm not sure.
That's when they hold an election at the actual Senior Senator, correct?
We would like to have a show of service.
I would move that we accept Mr. Kingen's resignation.
Second.
Publish an opening available and that it specifically be sent to those on the roster in case anybody would like to step in as a part-time. Don, do we need to do it outside? Do we need to put it in the paper, or can we do an internal, just an internal?
Could we separate the motions first?
I thought you were dead.
I'm sorry?
I thought you were dead.
Well, I seconded too early, he was not done, but I'm sorry, may we go back?
I'll go back, I'll accept the resignation and I'll do-
And I'll second that as a motion.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Don, do we have to publish, or can we inform those within the Department of the opening?
You should publish.
Okay, I would move that we publish...
I think you're gonna-
The vacancy.
I will second. In the discussion, I think you need to do some discussion on what you're planning on doing. Because if you advertise on the outside, you're gonna have to hire another person. And there is no budget to hire another full-time person. So, if you, I mean, you can advertise it as a part-time position. Or, you know, if you're going to promote someone from within, you could make it a full-time position, I guess, as part of their... If they're already full-time employed, but-
I would like to-
There is no room in the budget to hire another full-time employee.
Did that position with part-time didn't come with any health plan?
No, when they chose to hire... I don't even remember who the last hire was, but they chose to hire him. Because Brett was doing it part-time, so they hired a full-time EMT. So either we need to, if we don't promote from within, we'll need to either terminate an employee to get a full-time health plan... Or move somebody to full-time.
You could hire a part-time external person, wouldn't qualify for benefits, but-
I would, I guess my motion would be that we advertise for a part-time.
Okay.
I know that we, that we don't have the ability right now to hire a full-time. If we advertise for a part-time, see what happens, if it doesn't, then we're gonna have to make some other decisions.
I was talking to some other counties at the conference in Kansas City. You know, they have different setups, of course, and they, the particular groups that I was speaking with were all counties under 5,000 population. So, a lot of them have consolidated things like emergency management in EMS, or someone that does dispatch and works in the Sheriff's Office... And also coordinates shifts and does some of the paperwork for the EMS department. So I think we could have some conversations, especially if there is someone in the department that would like to do some of the scheduling and things like that that Brett has been doing. But I think there's time to figure out maybe a different method. I know it was mentioned before that when you guys switched over to 24-hour shifts, there wasn't a lot of exploration there... And not a lot of calculation as to how that was going to have a cost effect on the budget there for that particular department. I mean, we have a really high budget for low population in this county for EMS.
It wasn't. The 24-hour shifts that did that, it was the full-time employees that caused the problems with the budget. Whether they worked a 12-hour shift or 24-hour shift, it didn't matter. When you hired three additional full-time employees with benefits, that's what caused the problem with the budget.
But their budget doesn't include their health insurance plan. Our health insurance plan is itemized separately as its own line item in our budget for all the employees.
Okay.
So I'm just talking about even within the EMS-
I used to cover, I used to cover 12 to 15 nights a month on the annuals at a buck fifty an hour. So when they had to replace me with full-time employees, they make a little bit more than a buck fifty an hour.
Right, but we're also guaranteeing every employee eight hours of overtime every week. So each employee is getting paid for their full-time forty hours, and then they do an additional eight hours of overtime every single week. So that's also a scheduling, that's a scheduling choice for us to do it that way. Because they take two 24-hour shifts, which equals forty-eight hours, and anything over forty, you get the overtime for the eight.
I think you're gonna find most all ambulance service running 24-hour shifts anymore. Same with fires, I mean, that's just the way it's set up. Most of those paramedics work multiple places, and that's just standard. I don't care, Mitchell County, Ellsworth County, Sling County, Russell County, they're all that way.
Well, none of those are our population size, though. We can't really compare apples to oranges with that, I mean-
Well, maybe you should take the class and you could work for a buck fifty an hour, ten or twelve nights a month, and that would alleviate the budget problem.
Or we could all consider exploring options.
So the motion to second was to advertise for a part-time EMS director. There's no further discussion, all of the favors say aye.
Aye.
Got a tax abatement. On a C-Doo Sportster, two forty horsepower boat. Ali Man Gugula, I believe is how you say it. Being net change of thirteen dollars and fifty-six cents.
So move?
Second. Is there any discussion? Not all those in favor say aye.
Okay.
Can we go back just a second for ambulance?
Sure.
And I know that you added part-time in the motion. But if you have a part-time ambulance director and one of the full-time employees, this question's gonna come up. One of the full-time employees applies for it.
Hmm?
Right.
Do they get moved to part-time? Because they're gonna ask.
Very good catch there.
Well, if you advertise for a full-time and you don't hire from within, then what are you gonna do?
I know. What if we just advertise for an ambulance director?
That's fine, it's me, I don't care.
Yeah, I think they're gonna want-
We can't, we can't hire one-
I don't wanna know whether it's full-time or part-time.
I know.
The outside.
I guess you could say part-time could be full-time.
Well, you also have to think of it this way, right now you have one part-time person coming in for a 24-hour shift in a week. And they're considered the director, putting together the schedule. They're supposed to be responsible, according to their job description, for billing, which that has not been done in that position. And there are some other things there, they're responsible for overseeing maintenance, et cetera. And that's supposed to all be done in one 24-hour shift by a part-time department head. If you change that to a full-time where they're there five days a week for eight hours a day, they can also be the second person who goes out during that eight hours of that particular shift. Then you only have to schedule someone for an eight-hour day, five days a week, with your full-time department head, if they're running together. So there are ways to reschedule that.
I guess my question, Don, would be that if we have the full-time person that comes in for that, certainly I would assume that they would want to work the other part-time for the remainder. And once they work over that number of hours, we have to provide benefits for them.
Yes, if they're over twenty hours, you have to provide part-time benefits, which adds up to your premium for whole shift.
No, but I meant a full-time, if they come in and want to remain full-time but take part of their shift as director, or part of their time as director, they're still gonna be full-time, right?
You'd have to-
No, they're basically having two jobs. You're basically asking them to be a department head.
It doesn't matter if they have two jobs, that they're both employed by the county, correct?
Correct, but then you're not advertising correctly because then you're advertising for a full-time. How about this, how about we just get the ad in the paper that we're advertising for a position? And we put on time to discuss it further next week, and I'll block off a half an hour to discuss it.
That's fine.
And I'll have TD come down and we'll visit. I just, I'm afraid if you, I, it's just a question, it's gonna come up, I know. And we just wanna cover our bases with advertising the position.
It was my understanding that the whole premise of what we have set up now, his title is interim director, because we had a full-time director for three or four personnel ago. And currently, he has served in this capacity for about two years, and we'll give a little more, probably. And the title is interim because it is part-time. I mean, I wasn't here when you set that up, but that's the assumption I'm making because of the titles that were given and the hourly schedule that's been utilized.
We need to move on, we're behind already. Cindy, did you have some more stuff for us this morning?
No, just following up on if you had any questions from last time.
Okay. Yeah, I did. I had some problems. Our letter indicated, the material you gave us, that basically we have three layers here. We have the Flint Hills Agent, which deals with the state and federal programs. We have a county coordinator.
At this point, we don't.
Yeah, but there is a county coordinator she talked about, which seemed to be under local control. And then we had Site Manager. She got over here into her other part of her letter. It appears that the Flint Hills Council on Aging was going to determine whether or not who our council coordinator was going to be and what they could do.
No, I don't-
Where are you reading that part?
Well, number four, under conflict of interest.
I believe the Senior Center managers and employees at Flint Hills, is that correct?
Yes. Number four, conflict of interest. The area agency on aging will not prevent anyone from applying for any job, but we will ask our center manager to decide which position here she wishes to fill, should, if offered. Sorry.
Dramatically not correct.
Yes, the coordinator job.
But my point is, if they are both part-time positions, how can you deny a person working, working a part-time job under the hours, if they're not, if the hours are not the same, is my point. If one is a morning job and one is an afternoon job, how can that be a conflict of interest?
You don't need to scream at me.
I think you need to, you need to read farther and you'll see what the conflict's in. I don't, I think it's-
It was brought up at the council meeting at first, before this information came, that if she did keep the job, she would have to do it in the afternoon. So that, that would be that. But then there became the conflict of interest because she is hired by the Council on Aging in Manhattan, let's just say Manhattan for that. So that's where the conflict of interest is.
The true conflict of interest-
And I'm just sharing the information.
Has to be monetary. You, any, any person has an emotional conflict of interest at any given time. But the true conflict of interest has to be monetary. And I think what this letter is trying to portray is that if the Council on Aging is going to continue to subsidize the positions that are provided at minimum wage by area agency on aging, then in essence, if the same person has both of those jobs, they're, they're subsidizing their own job from one job to the other. And I do understand that conflict.
And the senior center, Lincoln Senior Center already subsidizes that position.
However, if the Council on Aging-
In addition to what the Manhattan pays.
If the Council on Aging is not gonna continue to be the distributor of funds, and the council, or an hour of commission distributes funds directly to the senior centers, then that eliminates that conflict of interest.
That would be, my opinion, I don't know.
Well, I mean, it definitely would be, because if we choose to allocate money directly to the senior center for whatever their budget proposes, if the commission releases that money, it's theirs at that point, and then the Council on Aging no longer serves as a distribution center. So whoever works for the Council on Aging is not effectively deciding where any money goes.
But the coordinator doesn't not make the decision on how that money is spent. That is the Council on Aging. They're the ones that make the final decision on where that money is going to go.
It should be.
So, so I question whether there should be a conflict of interest, unmonetarily, because it is not the senior center that is, to me, they're, they're separate. The coordinator, the Council on Aging is paying the coordinator. Right? So they are determining where that money goes, not the coordinator.
That's how it would ideally be.
Well, yeah, so, so I guess I don't see, I, I'm very not sure that number four, there is a conflict. The other problem I have with this is that it appears that the coordinator, one of the conflicts was the coordinator being asked to compile budget requests. We have departments that develop budget requests. It's not a conflict of interest because they're running that department, because we are the ones that are eventually going to make that final decision on what that budget is. You know?
But what it's saying is part of the budget request that that person is doing is facilitating a wage that they will be also receiving.
So is, so is, so it's a highway department. When he comes in, his wages are in that budget.
But it's not two separate entities. We're talking about two separate entities.
Yes, you are. We're talking about-
Yeah, you just established that they're very much separate, because one is county-run and one is state, state and federally affiliated. They're very much two separate entities. In fact-
But I don't know how you're gonna operate two separate entities, because I can assure you-
You're talking about meal program?
There are gonna be multiple people coming in there when she's on, when the person's on the clock as the Site Manager, asking questions related to the county, or the area agency on aging stuff, so.
And even giving advice as a shick employee, and she has not been trained by shick.
It's not Cindy, it's me.
But you gave it as a public letter.
This letter was to me.
Right.
And, and I gave Cindy one out of courtesy.
You gave everybody one.
We're supposed to have an open meeting.
Did it cross the table at the meeting?
Yes.
Pardon me?
Did it cross the table at the meeting? If it did, it's a matter of public record, everyone can say it.
I gave her one. But this is directed to me, what we've discussed, from Manhattan to myself.
Did you discuss it at your meeting? That it's a matter of public record, it doesn't matter-
It can be public record, I don't care. But she took it upon herself to bring this to the committee's meeting, when we, as our committee, is still discussing it.
Well, it's a matter of public record.
It can be public record. I'm saying-
It could have flown in on a bird, it doesn't matter, it's a public record, once it crossed the table, your meeting.
This letter, it's me, and, and I shared it with Cindy and, and our board members, but we're supposed to have an open discussion with all of Lincoln County, not just our board, or Sylvan Senior, Senior Center. It's for an open meeting for the whole county to decide what we want for a coordinator. And she took it upon herself to bring this to you and, and, and discuss it when we hadn't even finished discussing it ourselves.
It had been brought up three months ago.
It doesn't matter, it doesn't matter.
It's still a work in progress. If it's a work in progress, it's not an open record.
It, it is an open product still, but she took it upon herself to bring it to you.
The correspondence is-
And that's wrong.
Over three months ago, it was brought up about whether there would be an area coordinator or not, and there was a discussion at that time, which is on the video.
She told you last meeting that she's the one that got it, it's written to me.
No, I got it at the meeting.
Just in defense of the commission, I just wanna say a few things. We, we did, like, we just got a letter today. We are actually appointing board members for the direct, the Board of Directors for this group. So there is, there's an interest in our board understanding the communication that comes from them. And I understand what you're saying. You're saying, I got this letter, we haven't figured anything out about it yet, so now here we are deliberating over what it means.
I don't consider this letter being a work in progress. Maybe your discussion of this letter is a work in progress.
Why can't it talk about it, Terry?
This letter, I think this letter be a work in progress, it was sent out, it's signed.
It's a question of area coordinators.
We also establish approval for budgets for these particular entities. So it is interesting to see this kind of correspondence, because in the past, I can tell you personally, I've had conversations with Karen Mays where not one word of this was mentioned, in her opinion or outlook on what the situation is or how things are set up. Because Lincoln County does it very differently than some other counties. Right in Mitchell County, there's just a volunteer coordinator who compiles information and just points people in the direction of different agencies, you know what I mean?
We're the only county that has a coordinator.
That's full-time paid position.
That's right.
I agree, yes, I know that.
On this, we're supposed to have an open meeting with Lincoln County to, to decide what we want a coordinator to be responsible to and of. We haven't done that yet, we're still in the process of that.
Don't you think maybe the-
You advertised, though.
Don't you think the first part of the, oh, there's an advertisement for it?
That's right, for a coordinator, but the board, our board has not decided yet on, on what we want the coordinator to do. I mean, even though we have a, a, a position description, we can have a position description, but now we need to have the county come in and say, hey, we want to have this included in, in your position description. So it's not, it's not completed yet.
I understand your concern. I will say, though, we're missing a big chunk of this, and it was several months ago, two months ago, I had asked that our own internal counsel, which is our own county attorney, give us some advice on what we need to be doing with the mill levy at all. Because we don't even have the physical charter resolution for the first half, up to mill, up to one mill, I think. Because then each additional one was half, and then another half, you know, two. So that first mill, I don't even know that we're legally collecting it. I mean, there are some things that the commission needs to figure out as far as funding something like this. So even before your board knows that they have enough budget to have a full-time employee, we don't know if we've legally been collecting that first out of the two mills.
Alexis, it's been, it's been seventy thousand dollars for the last many years, but now it's gonna be different, because our budget's gonna be different, because it's only part-time instead of full-time. And there's no benefits, so our budget's gonna be different than what it has been in the previous past. But that's something we still need to discuss, and you're bringing it to yourselves, and, and it's not done yet, we should need to discuss in this.
A county coordinator doesn't need to be hired at this point in time if they haven't done that, but they had gone ahead and advertised it without the things on the first, underneath hiring a county coordinator. And I think that was the concern, that Manhattan had.
Do you have a written resignation from the previous position from the-
A certified letter's been sent, it has not been, been sent back, but according to-
A certified letter has been sent from the Council on Aging to the previous employee, saying, please give us a resignation, and I do this.
It's been sent.
Did Jan, my question-
That's a reasonable effort, that's a considered reasonable effort on your part.
And, and it's been now three months.
We don't know if Jan was supposed to send it to President of the meeting. Truthfully, we cannot say, yes, she did it, because we have not seen it.
You haven't seen a receipt for it or anything?
But the technicality, if you look at the situation, she gave Jan a verbal, the President, a verbal resignation. In any job, if you don't come to the job and do it, you automatically get fired or lose your job.
Period, you know? Jan's gonna, I'm gonna write, I'm gonna have the board write up a letter, since we haven't received it from Teresa, and have Jan sign it that she received a verbal. That way we can continue and go forward with our position, because according to Manhattan, we, we can't just, just hire somebody without some kind of a-
Can't force somebody to give you a letter, but if you send a registered letter, they received it, and they didn't respond, then I think that's a reasonable effort, so.
Okay, so we will get a letter.
But you need to have a receipt for the certified, yeah.
We've got that, we've got that.
And another question that comes up is if you're getting rid of one area coordinator for certain reasons, then those are reasons you shouldn't be hiring another one for the same thing. So if a person is doing volunteer work, which is the SHIC program, and that was counted as part of their forty hours, that should have been eliminated, because that is a volunteer program. And they've had SHIC trainers over at Sylvan, it was very well attended, I think they scheduled another one. They've had one in Lincoln now, and that's making, what you're getting, your advocacy, that's making this department in Manhattan do their job, which is to provide SHIC training.
Well, we need to move on. I'm sure there's gonna be a lot of discussion in the next few weeks or month and a half anyhow, as to how we're gonna deal with this.
There was, like, for the last three months, lots of people calling Manhattan wanting it, and I think this letter was a result of her wanting to set the stage straight. Any other, was there any questions about the meal program? Which was the other thing that people were questioning.
I didn't have any. I didn't have any, I thought it was three or four days ago.
Did you have anything on it?
The meal program?
The friendship meals.
I guess it's just, we've finally established that that is a separate, yet subsidized by Lincoln County program where we employ the cooks, the head cook, an additional one or two.
How many?
One. One. And the, well, we, I shouldn't say we employ, they are employed there, the cooks.
From Manhattan.
Right, and the, and the site coordinators.
And the thing that they got called on was that they hadn't advertised in advance, that the site manager should not be picking somebody, it needs to be an advertised position.
If that position is resigned or if there's...
If there's an opening for a cook, that position should be advertised. And also the council on aging in Manhattan would like to see more seniors be looked at as employed from that. That's part of the whole mission. Now, any other questions? Then I can take back to Karen and ask.
I don't believe I have any.
Not at this time. I think we need to hear back from the council and see where they are in that process.
No, exactly. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, Rita Fay Kelly?
This is very simple, but I'll just hand these out so that you can all see what we're asking here. We, uh, this is my husband Ken and I, Rita Fay. We live at Ada, actually, we're not in Lincoln County, we do pay taxes in Lincoln County. But anyway, this is a Christmas present we'd like to do for our daughter and her husband. They have a, a situation where their house is just a little ways from their barn, but the road is dirt right through there. And we'd like, as a Christmas present to them, at no expense to the county, to put some rock on that road. You can see the last page, when it gets muddy, they have to go clear around with their chore and outfit and get on that busy Highway eighteen. And as mom and grandma, I'd just love to have them be able to just go across there. And we thought it should be no problem, but we thought we wanted to check with you guys just to, to make sure it's all right. We would, um, by the rock, we'd pay for the hauling and everything, just so that it could have, could have rock on it.
Do you have any idea where you're getting it from?
We would be getting it from Lincoln, yeah.
That one in Shred Center?
I think.
Normally, we would wanna spread it, correct? We would wanna do the spreading of it. So, uh, coordinate it with the highway department so they can...
I called the highway department, somebody's supposed to call me back, and they never returned my calls. So I thought, "I don't know, maybe, maybe they..."
Well, the guy that normally takes care of that stuff is...
Was on lead, yeah, she explained that to me, that there was a fill-in or something.
We will, we will contact, I'll get ahold of them and I'll make sure they call you, your number's on here.
Yep, her number's on there, yep. We would, we would really like to do it before Christmas.
Did you already get an estimate of, of the amount? Not price, just the quantity, so that we would have an idea of?
Not really, I was kinda leading that up to the truck driver to...
Fill it in as they go.
We, we used this truck driver before and he's real good about hauling it and kinda spreading it as he hauls it, yeah. So I think he would be able to pretty much spread it, but...
Yeah, I think, just so we know when it is so we can have a blade there to make sure.
So if we can kinda get it scheduled and then let your department know when it's being delivered?
Yeah.
It'd be nice while it's still soft.
Yeah, it's kind of ideal right now, I think.
We, I will get ahold of him today.
Okay.
And have him contact you.
Okay.
And coordinator, I don't think you ever have a problem with it.
No, I, that's fine.
I don't have, I, I guess the only thing is it will be our obligation to make, to redo it when the rock's gone or, you know, that's...
We're not gonna obligate the county in any way.
That would be the other thing, the upkeep of the road, you know? I guess the other problem is, is that where that low water park or that crossing where that drainage is?
I think they fixed it.
They fixed it.
They put a, they did quite a bit of work there, yeah.
Okay, okay, okay.
Which I think was done well, yeah.
Okay, alright, I knew that was a problem at one time and wasn't sure that they got that completely correct.
And so there is gravel on either side of that, just not in between?
Right, it's kind of a different situation and I don't know how it came to be that way, but we're just hoping bygones can be bygones.
It was because of the drainage issue.
Because of that problem.
Cause they just kept washing the rock off, rock off, so they just...
So, so that's kinda solved now and so this should...
So, yeah, we hope, we don't know.
I would say, at one time, there were probably two different landowners there.
Okay, yeah, so, so there was no need, no need to go, yeah, yeah.
That would be my guess.
Yeah, well, yeah, there's some reason for the whole thing, but anyway. Well, we would just like to thank you a whole bunch and we'll get right on it as far as getting the truck driver and, and we'll coordinate with your people so that they'll know when, when it's all taking place.
I'll get ahold of him today and, you know, I wouldn't do anything until he calls you, but I think he'll call you.
Okay, okay, alright.
Is this a cell number on here or is that your home number?
It, it's a, it's a cell number.
Okay.
Yep.
I just, just make sure it wasn't a special time he needed to call, so.
Yeah, yeah, okay. Thank you very much, appreciate that.
Okay, we have a letter here from the Lincoln Junior, Junior High School about an internship. Didn't we do that once before, Dawn?
Um, we did with the...
With a, someone to help with the cleaning and stuff, vocational type deal?
Well, we did with a student that was considered special ed. They're wanting us to actually do, like, any student.
Office-type work or...
I'm assuming. And I'm just gonna be honest with you, we didn't have enough in one office, so like they rotated and some of the other departments wasn't necessarily very good at, about organizing. And I just don't have the time or the energy to, to find somebody, something to do every single day. It's just easier for me to do it myself. But, um, that doesn't mean some of the other departments might not be interested. And it doesn't necessarily have to be secretarial work, it may be also...
Labor?
Yes. Um, the only thing is, is, you know, we're restricted that some of the stuff that employees do not have to be eighteen. So, I just, I don't, I don't know.
So if we could find another department to be in charge of it, you wouldn't object to it as long as you didn't have to be in charge of scheduling them here and scheduling them there? Okay.
Is that fair?
I guess I...
I have taken on so much over the years, I just need to stay sane.
No, I don't have a problem with that, I understand that completely.
I just think the letter needs shared with the other departments, with the departments and if they're interested.
You just wanna scan it and email it?
I, uh, I have some real questions about some of the... Confidentiality of the stuff that goes on in the courthouse and in the departments, I think. I'm not saying that young kids, I don't know that they realize the gravity, gravitability or...
But any of the records they're dealing with in those departments are open records, aren't they?
Mostly unless they were shredding items and then they would necessarily do something.
I wonder if Kelly could use them.
That's a potential. Um, I just, when we had the personal disabilities, you know, they, that was clean. Um, some shredding and things like that, you know? I still think that they would learn very much if we just had them do nothing but shredding. So I think in order to make it an educational experience and, and true. Now, when I first started here, Doris used to have a student come up an hour a day and she filed all of the, um, at the time, every time there was a law that was introduced, you know, you would get those weekly updates and she would be responsible, but we don't get things like that anymore. We have them enter a vision game into the system, but we just don't have, everything's different now than what it was. That doesn't mean there isn't some departments that, that would be willing to, and I just don't know. I just...
What about the county attorney, is she moving? They haul stuff for her? I mean, some of that, I guess, is privileged information, but if you're just following boxes, I mean, they can, maybe she would be interested?
It's like a one-time, I think they're wanting this to be calendar year.
Oh, for the whole year?
Yes, this is a daily deal.
Oh.
And I, I guess, I, I'm with you, Dawn, I, if you're gonna do it, it takes a lot of planning and it takes a lot of responsibility. I've had kids come in the classroom when I taught. And that's just another job, I'm sorry, for me.
It's another person.
Yeah, you know, and you, and you do have to plan for them. I mean, that's all there is, that you gotta plan what they're gonna do and they have to have guidance.
So, while we're gonna share the information...
We can share, I'm, I'm totally...
Someone's interested in doing that part.
But I think we need to be specific on what they're going to do too.
Well, I will send out to all of the people and if it would be okay with you, maybe I would just have, maybe I could ask Dee Dee to do that and have her send it out and then kinda organize what everybody would, if they could have to offer.
I think it would be her responsibility.
That would be acceptable. It looks like it's for the next school year that they're trying to plan ahead on.
Yeah, it says nineteen, twenty. Yeah, I think, turn it over to her and let her approach people and see if they're interested. I don't think we'll enforce it on them, but...
I know they have some different aspects, some of it's just an hour. I know there are a lot of, if you have an IP, you can get a, a job, job where they send you into a facility. I know APAC has done that in the past, Pizza Hut has done that, the grocery store. But I just don't know if we have enough for, we can look at four-hour.
It appears on that letter too that we're responsible to pay them.
Yeah, it says with a pay, pay stub.
And I just...
You have, you'd have to do minimum wage then, you have no, you have no option?
I mean, I mean, you know, uh, I guess, I, I have some real problems with it myself. But if one of the departments feels that they can present me a good plan, I'm willing to listen. But, uh...
Yeah, I'd agree with that.
But it is, it is going, it is gonna cost. It's not volunteer.
Are you opening the doors for other volunteers?
So would you like, would you like to grease the motor grater every morning?
Sure. No problem, for an extra pressure, sure.
You can come in at six thirty.
A nice morning.
Only get this blow fifteen minutes.
Are you ready for me?
Yes, ma'am, we sure are.
Okay, I have, um... Well, I got it. Um, Michael was not going to be able to be on the agenda, I should've told you this to begin with. And, um, he had something that came up last minute. And Tanner was originally supposed to be here today. They can't find another Monday where Tanner can come this week, so he's actually gonna come on Wednesday. So Michael asked if you guys had anything on the list, he knew that he had one-twentieth on the list. If you had anything else that you wanted Tanner to address specifically this month, um, to let him know. Or you can let me know and I can let him know, but he's gonna be there on Thursday.
I think if he's gonna take a look at that one-twentieth road situation, it's probably gonna fill up most of his hours, I would say.
I was also wondering, where were we on the lacquer project? I know the north and south road is what they already did, but we had some plans for that.
Probably did.
The east and west road is done completely?
Didn't they?
I don't know, they're all done.
They put in two culverts out there.
I don't know how many.
Several months ago.
I was thinking.
Damn, was, I don't...
I haven't driven up there and I can and will, but I just, it dawned on me that I had never talked to them about the final...
Two or three months ago.
Um, I'm, I'm...
I would've thought we'd have heard something about it with all this rain, cause it was, that's where it was washing.
Well, he was talking about having a crane up there and stuff, so I'm sure that they...
Yeah, and that they had gotten that other, I kinda remember that, I just don't remember when that was, so, okay.
Yeah, I'm sure we, I'm sure it's better.
And you can think on it and send me an email or send, send him an email, but that's what they're gonna do and then they'll... Um, otherwise it was due in two Mondays in January, so we, they just thought they would go ahead and at least get started on that.
There, and this isn't for Tanner necessarily, but I believe it's Quartz, straight south fourteen and then back to the west. Let's see. No, that's, that's north, where would it be? Maybe it's Jaguar, it was to the south. I think I have the note, you might be, and I'll have to... I'll see if I have it after, after the meeting and I'll bring it to you that you can just...
Okay.
And I'll, I'll see if you can send him an email.
Um, and then at eleven, Dick Hay has blocked off. If Jennifer could get down here, she was going to, but she didn't know how much and Dave was gonna go upstairs and apparently she had stacked this thick, but she didn't think she was gonna get away. Um, so when we do that, I'm just supposed to remind you that you're supposed to go into executive session. I would almost assume we'd get him on the phone and then go in once he's on the phone.
Sure.
Um, in that same standpoint, um... I really don't know how to address this one besides it's also with Mr. Hay, but, um...
Is it correspondence?
No, it's on the ambulance service billing, the medic, appealing with Medicare. They only electronically accept, or they only accept electronic files, et cetera, et cetera, when you're appealing with Medicare. So we lost the first initial appeal and then we could retain an attorney. And everything has to be filed electronically and Jennifer doesn't have the means to do that. And I guess they spent, like, I don't know, two full days trying to figure it out and they couldn't. She asked Mr. Hay if they had experience and if they were already set up to go, and he is, so I have an agreement for that.
To contract him to do that?
Yes, and then he...
Is it based on a percentage of what we retain, what's his fee?
That I don't know, cause I haven't looked at it. And I thought maybe if, while you guys were on the phone with him, you could talk about that. And then he did go ahead and file the first part of the appeal, whatever process the deadline was at the time. So he's done a portion of it, but she felt like you probably should have him on retainer to do that.
Yeah.
So that is those papers. And then, um, the, I have seven minutes. So the other thing that I had was, um... So the townships are kind of a mess. When people get elected, they don't know, people write people in. We have seven, I believe, active townships. Golden Belt Township is one of them. Apparently, uh, Gordon Krueger was elected the township clerk, he's already currently the township trustee. And so he's resigning his position and he would like you guys to appoint Kurt Doe back to the position. Kurt, apparently they, you guys appointed him a couple of years ago. I don't, I, I can't remember, but I remember he was involved in it. They wanted to try to find somebody younger, he's expressed interest, he's gone out and he's helped to mark the grave sites and things like that, because everything right now is just in Gordon Krueger's mind.
So that's the position that we appoint?
Technically by statute, yes, if, if...
With no one runs or with no one elected?
Yes, and so since they have resigned, I kinda think that maybe they might just put Kurt in. I started to look back through the minutes and got busy on Friday.
The clerk is elected and the trustee is appointed.
No, they're all re-elected. The treasurer and the trustee were elected last two years ago.
It's a different rotation, okay.
Yes.
So if they're not elected, then you can appoint, that's...
Yes.
If there's a vacancy.
If there's a vacancy, so he's, he's resigned.
He's willing to do it, I have no problem.
Well, and they said that they had gone through a whole list of other people that they had asked, but they were trying to get somebody too that was younger that would be probably there for a lifetime. But I don't know how you guys feel about that, I just, he resigned, he put in his recommendation. I told him I would talk to you guys about it and...
Was he elected to this position the last time? And that, and so now he's...
No, he replaced somebody that was deceased.
Can I ask a question?
Yeah, sure.
What, what do they do?
This particular township has a cemetery that they maintain.
So that's all really?
So that's it, mostly, yeah.
The old trustee, treasurer, and who else?
Clerk.
Clerk.
Okay, and they, that, I was just wondering.
All townships, I guess, do, but they don't function.
Somebody wrote me in one year for trustee and I didn't even know when I was...
And I had so many questions the last several years, I just didn't email out to any of the, or I didn't mail this or communicate it out to any inactive characters.
Those are more inactive.
Okay, thank you.
But the ones with cemeteries are...
I just didn't know what they're doing.
So, yeah, and some ha, also have township halls. But other than that...
Now, like down in Elfrid County, right, they actually, townships run the graders and stuff, so they actually have more of a job.
They're on township, so some are on townships.
Budget, okay.
Well, so do these townships, they have their own budgets.
Well, just for the cemetery. I meant, they have their own operating working capital for them to run their own road system and whatnot.
What is the cemetery? I think he said Boss Cemetery.
It's doing there right by this Gordon's house.
So...
Well, I have no problems, I'll move to appoint Kurt.
Second.
If there's no further discussion, all those in favor, say aye.
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 Okay, thank you.
Are there any other townships that were, got problems?
No, that's the only one that I know of. I think Battle Creek Township, they did have, because Gary and Bonnie were both on them when Bonnie passed, but they elected somebody. I still think they need one more.
You went on elected in Highland, do you remember?
I don't remember, but they're not active.
Okay.
They don't have anything. And I wanna say, I think you had mentioned the cemetery.
It is a cemetery.
Our abandoned cemetery.
Right, it's a part of our list, but my question is, so what do we do? Because, I mean, if they're only getting mowed two to three times a year, depending on weather or whatever, and once they're kind of run down, and I think the problem is, there's been a lot of cattle go through that particular one. I forget, is that called the Highland Township Cemetery? I don't know what it's called.
I'm not sure. I mean, you guys.
I think we looked at that one thing, Highland Township didn't have a cemetery or something.
If it's only abandoned cemetery list, I mean, you guys have the choice of taking care of it more than often than what you do. You just have to bunch up the money to spend for it. A lot of times people ask, they had some stones down one cemetery, but we don't, we don't pick the stones back up, we don't replace unless somebody comes and talks to you guys and you guys approve that.
There's what an intern should be doing.
And I guess if Jennifer's not here, we'll just, I think that light must definitely die, didn't it?
Signal on it was leaving.
Oh, and one other. Okay. You know it's gonna knock me out when it's these days, I'm just gonna fall. That pop machine is about ready to die. Sharon gave me a guy's name that come from the Ellsworth area, but he needs more people or more businesses to put, to be able to come, to make it worth his while. And so we kinda reached out to US Towers, the hospital. None of them were really interested. The hospital and US Towers are both serviced through Mahaska, which is that company that Jim Ferris works for. So I don't know, is it okay if we reach out to them? I think the thing is running all the time and it's just.
Yeah, I think.
We'll contact them again and make sure, and just tell them we couldn't find any, but I don't, the question was, was the highway department or the ambulance shed, I just don't know if there's enough volume to.
I think the ambulance shed bought their own machine a few years ago, but I don't know.
Anybody stocks it?
Yeah, nobody stock it themselves. Last time, dude, they were stocking it themselves.
Well, we bought ours for a buck.
The machines?
Yeah, well Pepsi wouldn't take care of it anymore. We did want to take it out, so.
They weren't selling enough, but nobody wanted to service it.
So just something to think about, and I'm probably gonna have to figure out something, because I'm not sure it's shut off yet this morning.
I don't have a problem with reaching out to see what.
Do you need one?
Yes, they need.
Yeah, it's kinda surprising how much, and it's not really employees, it's more guests than employees. The water goes through with the employees.
My experience with it isn't all that good. It's sort of a slot machine with no handle.
Yeah.
You don't win the jackpot very often.
Well, and the sign now for the dollar bill changer says, you know, and the one day I couldn't get it to do anything, so I just finally love-tapped it and it's.
Sort of a contribution, but, you know.
Well, you can come up and unlock it or you reset it.
No.
Do you guys stock it or does someone come and stock it?
We stock it.
I mean, is there another local business that has a machine that would just double duty there, you know, I mean, if they're, have a second location, in other words?
The problem is, they doesn't sell enough that they don't want to come up here every week and restock it. And that's, that's what we ran into beforehand.
So who, you do that, does your office do that?
That's why there's a lot of lights on there right now, because we just haven't had time. And the sad thing is, is you go and you buy pop, but then there'll be a phase where you won't sell any and then it's outdated and then you put it back in and.
Can't the custodian do that?
We need to go.
Yep, are you guys ready?
Yes.
Yes, may I speak to Charles Hay, please? Okay, well, he's on our agenda to speak to anybody loving. Okay, thanks. Hi, Mr. Hay, this is Don Harlow at the Lincoln County Clerk's Office, and I'm gonna put you on speakerphone. Eric, can everybody hear?
We haven't gone into executive session yet. We're waiting to get you on the line first, Mr. Hay. I would move that we recess into executive session for, how many minutes do you think we need?
Are you talking to me?
Yes.
Oh, within a half an hour, do you think?
I think so. Thirty minutes.
Yeah.
Discuss data relating to financial affairs, trade secrets, corporations, partnerships, trusts, individual partnerships. Randy, I'd like to read safely. Me with the commissioners, Clerk Harlow and Commissioner-elect Randy Lohman and Mr. Hay. I second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
We have an agreement here to enter in with the Bolston Firm to do an appeal with Medicare on an ambulance service issue.
I would move the chairman to sign the agreement.
There are no further discussion, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. I see Marilyn's here. I think we, if you're coming about what we talked about last week, we've already approved it, so.
Well, thank you very much. I'll just give you the official schedule of the day, so it might change just a little bit.
Weather and storm, I've had enough storms this fall.
Actually, I showed up today just to see if Alexis had delivered yet.
We're all waiting, I don't know.
I ran off to look if you'll have some there. Well, thank you very much and sorry I stood up last week and.
No problem.
We got your notes, so we just.
Not the first woman that's done that to me.
We assumed what you were coming for, so.
Oh, I tell you, we're a poor different one, I'll have to speak early.
Yeah.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. I do have one thing I'd like to discuss before we get out of here. I've been serving on the Central Kansas Mental Health Board and I'll be going off there. Guess I will be, no longer be a commissioner, don't have to be a commissioner, but I would still like to get off of the board. We spoke with Galen Zier and she is very interested on serving on the board. She's a, I'm not sure exactly what her title is, dietitian or something like that. They, talking to the people down there, Central Kansas Mental Health, they think it would be great to have a nutritionist on the board, because nutrition and mental health kinda go hand in hand. And they think the nutritionist part for education would serve them very well. I never really equated that, but I guess it's absolutely true. Most people who have mental health issues don't get nutrition like they shouldn't get I think she would be a good addition to the board myself.
I have no problems appointing, known for years. She was a former student, very good, very responsible person. I'll move to appoint Galen Zier to the Central Kansas Mental Health Board, represent Lincoln County.
I second, is that monthly or quarterly?
Monthly, monthly. Is there no further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Does anyone have anything else to add?
We need to, we need to make a motion about what we're asking the attorneys to do for us.
Okay.
That's kinda what I gathered from the conversation with him, so I'll try to word it, I know it's kind of lengthy here, but I move the commission approve our hired counsel to request an equipment list from Lincoln Park Manor for appraisal, as well as the census report for all of 2018, to determine the debt in rent owed to the county.
You get it?
I think that's all I need in that one.
I would second. Is there any further discussion? If not, all those in favor say aye.
Aye. And then, do you think that we should address what we're gonna ask the attorneys to do as far as putting together?
I think we gave them instructions to what we wanted and I think that's.
Yeah, I think that's.
Sufficient and that was an executive session.
Yeah.
It wasn't a decision, but it was a conversation and so I think they're, we're covered.
Okay.
That needs to be.
Well, then I think that at least documents what we need to know and what we've instructed the attorneys to do for us at this point in our.
To me, that was part of our attorney-client relationship.
What did you mean?
Yeah, it's still a work in progress.
Yes, yes, it is, it is. Because we're going to receive, we're going to receive stuff, we're gonna receive stuff.
Gotcha.
The abatement, I don't think you guys did.
Yeah, we did.
We did.
Yeah.
Yes, it was for a CDO.
CDO vote.
I moved on.
I didn't think we had.
I don't remember who moved on second.
I think I moved.
Yeah, I think Aljo moved.
Well, good lord, where was I at?
Sleeping?
Yeah. Aljo moved and Alexis seconded. I've got it written down here.
Okay, thank you.
Well, okay. I was definitely not here, apparently. I was here, but.
Well, if there's no further discussion, I guess we'll adjourn until the seventeenth at ten o'clock.
Are we gonna meet the twenty-fourth?
Yes, we did decide.
We are going to meet?
Yes. Because, oh, but then we also have the end of the month that.
Thirty-first.
Oh, yes, the following Monday.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, so it's Monday and then Monday.
The court. I knew we were giving them a half-day off, but I didn't know whether we were.
What we can do, instead of doing an additional, an additional end of the month, we just have Monday and Monday left. It's on a, it's on a Monday.
Well, I know, I know, but I just wondered if we were gonna skip the twenty-fourth meeting since it was Christmas Eve, but it doesn't matter to me. I just wanted to know whether that.
We can see, we can see where we're at next week and make that decision if there's nothing to come in for, but I assume that there may very well be something.
Well, it'll be done by noon.
Yeah.
I had Aljo moved and Alexis seconded on Brett Keenan's resignation.
Yes.
Yes, that's correct.
I'll be back to you.
Hey, Terry. Some lady from the Kansas Council on Mental Health called me. She said, you go to that meeting all the time and wanted to know if I would be interested to go with you sometime. When is that next week or something?
What's that?
When is that next week, that meeting? She said some date.
Yeah.
Now, you're really gonna get, that's the one you're talking about, getting Galen on for, well, that'd be fun. I could still probably go one time just to figure out.
Sure, I think you should. You should, you should honestly go two or three places sometimes. It's amazing, you know, you can't imagine.
Well, we'll see. Yeah, well, if Galen's gonna represent Lincoln, they probably would do too.
Well, you know, I had to ask her, he didn't seem interested there.
No, that's fine, I don't, that's fine. I don't know what I'm doing. So she would, but I might go just to find out what's going on there. When is that?
Seventeenth.
Seventeenth?
Next Monday and they're gonna, it's gonna be kind of a.
Is it afternoon? You want it to be in the afternoon or?
Yeah, three o'clock.
Or are you gonna go down too?
Yeah. I'll go down, kinda introduce Galen and stuff, see, I think, see if she.
Should I, I could go down too.
Sure, absolutely, there's no competing.
Yeah.
Where is this at? Central Kansas Mental Health, you know where it's at?
No, downtown there.
It's on Elm Hurst. Do you know where the YMCA is?
I could find it on Google Maps.
Do you know where the YMCA is?
Yeah.
Okay, it's just east of the YMCA.
Oh, over there by the, by the park, huh?
By the soccer field.
Yeah, just east, Kenwood Park, east of there, south of.
First building, south of.
Lincoln, it's Kansas Mental Health.
Central Kansas Mental.
Central Kansas Mental. I'll, I'll just Google it too. Okay, so it's three, and I'll see you next, because it's Monday here.
Yeah.
Didn't you remind me, now just go down there, okay. I'd like to see what's going on.
Yeah.
Oh, yeah, Galen would be good, I mean, she's.
Like I say, I think you should schedule a two.
I know, and just find out what's happening, because now, Lincoln County helps support that funding lives and stuff, so.
Yeah, they provide mental health services.
Therefore here, and we contribute to that other budget issue, huh?
Ottawa, Lincoln.
Alexis, have you been to that too?
I have not, I have not been there.
Ottawa, Lincoln, Eckenson.
Okay, well, I may, yeah, remind me next Monday I'll plan on you, I just like to see what's, what's going on.
Yeah.